Okay, call the meeting of the June 1st meeting of the Underhill Planning Mission Order. Any public comments? There's no public. I'm gonna go with no. I have an addition to the agenda though.
Do you? Okay, so do I.
Which is you.
Okay, that's that.
Okay, yeah, I don't consider you the public. So I'll turn it over to Nick who has some news to share.
Um, the news is that I've been offered and have accepted a job with South Burlington. So I will be moving on from Underhill. Yeah, I'm sorry to say, folks.
Are you here for the next meeting? You did the date, but I, you know.
I gave my notice as for two weeks from yesterday. So I'm not scheduled for it, but I'd be happy to sit in definitely.
Well, it's, it's, I just didn't know. No, it's up to you. I just didn't know. I wanted to have some schedule in my head as to being prepared.
Yeah, we can definitely talk, like, talk schedule today about, uh, the next, uh, the next steps for you guys and whatnot, but yeah. Had to, had to break the news and, um, it's been a real pleasure working with this body. I mean that quite sincerely. This has been a real highlight. It's been extremely educational. And, um, I, I doubt that I'm gonna get to work with such a good group when, you know, when I'm in South Burlington, so I'm gonna miss you all.
Okay.
What's your position with South Burlington?
City Planner.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll see what happens, uh, once I start, but, you know, in the process, I've been, was told probably focusing on affordable housing and energy issues. So we will see if that bears, bears out what's in there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna miss Underhill. I'm not gonna miss the commute. I'm not gonna lie. That's been tough.
Where do you live?
I live on South Willard Street in Burlington.
That is.
Yeah, near Champlain College. Yeah.
Well, congratulations. And, uh, we'll just make sure, I'll make sure to reach out to you and sit down on some minutia. Just for next meeting, the password for the computers.
Exactly, yeah.
For the meeting recording.
I've got, uh, yeah, yeah, I'm starting to, to catalog a, a bunch of different things, like passwords and whatnot, so, um, hoping to leave everyone with an easy X.
Awesome, yeah. Well, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Sandy, you missed the news that Nick is hitting us and taking a city planner position in South Burlington. So this is gonna be.
Sorry to see you go, Nick.
Oh. Um, well, that makes, uh, the figuring out where we are in the Village Center designation tonight all more important.
I guess so, yeah.
Get to that.
It comes late.
No worries.
I did, yeah, so.
Oh, well, let's do that real quick right now, man. Yeah, good point, Bart. So Nick, correct me if I'm wrong here, because obviously I met you going through this process. So if I remember correctly, Bart, the way it works is Brad and Sherry deal with, like, 99% of it, to be clear. And Val and Jen, Jennifer does.
They talk about hiring a.
Yeah. Hiring your replacement.
Yeah, they'll do a search.
They'll send us all the resumes, if I remember correctly. Then we get to see them all, the planning mission and the DRB. And then we'll circle back to Brad as will the DRB and say, like, we like these two or three people or whatever, we think this person's the best. And we'll do interviews, which, um, if anyone wants to volunteer to sit in on those interviews, that would be amazing. And, um, then, to be frank, we really, at least last time, really deferred to, I mean, we all agree, but really Brad and Sherry led the charge in terms, because, you know, they work with the first every day. Led the charge and like, we think this person's, would be great for the job. And then, you know, sort of there are no objections. Then it goes in front of the slideboard and one night. So, but it took months.
Yeah.
Three months maybe.
Yeah.
It takes a while.
So how did Sherry lead, lead the role now?
They lead the, they lead the, uh, logistics of trying to find the person. The one with Jennifer, like, putting in the.
But we used to all, as a whole, many, interview.
No, we did, we still did that. We all interviewed them, but I guess, I don't know.
We didn't all interview Nick.
You just, I think you sat in on one of my interviews.
Charlie then, Charlie, Charlie.
Charlie was on.
And Sandy too. I think Sandy.
Sandy, yeah, okay, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Charlie.
So whoever wanted to come, um, and I think, now I can't remember. I don't know if Sandy was in both of the, or I can't remember now if we did three interviews and if Sandy was in all of them. I think she was, but you're very, obviously very welcome to attend any of them.
No, just very acceptable change.
Yeah.
Just like nice, like.
Yeah. No, I think just in the sense that Brad and Sherry understand the day-to-days of the job a lot more. So, I mean, there were no disagreements, but we sort of let Brad and Sherry take the lead on, we think these are the three people we should interview. Do you agree or disagree? We all agreed, so, yeah. We'll see all the resumes. That's the process for you. And you're welcome to be, it'd be great if you wanted to be super involved.
And I'll be putting out, um, the, uh, an eventual job listing, once it's, once it's public, on the EPA, the Planters Association List Service and whatnot, try to get that directly to, to other people to be qualified for this position, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Uh, I think that takes us to minutes. Did, anyone have any questions or comments on the May 4th minutes?
I just don't know what Meg Aronson was asking for. I know her property, I know what she has there.
Oh, it was very specific to her property. It had to do with the short version and other people please turn in. It had to do with where she wanted to be able to put the house and where she is able to put the house because of where the wetland is. And what it really is, is sort of two things. One is, I think a fair summary is, we sort of, our point was, we don't really deal with these on like a one-off basis, except for the DRB, which she knew. But, which is, which you know, but that what you're talking about is actually gonna be part of our map review. But first, we need to have the natural resources inventory done. Then, so you're talking like a multi-year process of the zone. Cause her point was really a larger point about the zoning map and how it worked with respect to her property, so.
You know, because her, her property is in two different zoning.
Yes, scenic preservation.
Yeah, she wanted to give her some idea. But we had to be 15.
Okay.
We gave her some ADU ideas though, while she was in here, so, um, yeah, we just sort of did the best we could.
Yeah, Sherry is an ADU where she lives.
Well, I think they were talking about potentially switching ADU.
Yeah, we, we, we're sort of talking permit jujitsu. It's kind of where we ended it up. We ended up with it, the DRB. Maybe some, some moves that could be done formally through the permitting process, but at that point, we're getting into a level of detail that was beyond the planning commission.
So Nick was gonna speak to her directly.
I haven't talked to her since, but we, but it started as a discussion of what would, an apparent inconsistency between the layout of the zoning districts and their ostensible purpose statements.
So it's part of the larger, larger mapping project we wanna do, but, you know, that's, I think we're fair, probably, that's not gonna be done in three months, right?
We got some multi-year.
Jake's been writing years, though.
Well, it is actually one of our top priorities. We need this inventory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it is a good example of, of the inconsistencies that can occur in, you know, so that was, uh, that was useful.
The only other thing I'd mention in the minutes, which is not, just tangential to this, is the first thing I thought of after Nick told me was I could talk to Brad and we are going to, Brad, the Royal We, Brad is gonna ask the woman whose name I am now forgetting, Donna, who used to do the minutes.
Yes.
To do them again.
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be good.
Yeah, we're detailing that.
Yeah.
Um, Donna actually emailed me saying she, she wrapped up some other business she was taking care of and has more time for it.
Great.
So it's like we're back on.
That would be cool.
And I will start setting her minutes as of tonight.
Good.
Yeah.
Any other com, any other comments, questions on the May 4th minutes? Anyone wanna make a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. All in favor?
All right.
I think I can vote I if I wasn't being.
I think that's right.
Yeah, we have enough people now.
All right. That takes us to, um, okay. Do you wanna take over, Nick?
Sure.
This is kind of our most time-sensitive project.
Yeah, so this is, um, this is time-sensitive, although not, not, you know, last minute or under the gun. But this is something I've been kind of hinting at for a few weeks now, but we finally got a time to actually sit down and talk about it. So hoping we can emerge with enough of a consensus that this can move towards the Select Board. And the item at hand is the renewal of the Underhill Flats Village Center designation. This is a state designation.
Not the center as well?
Not the center. So they are separate villages.
Okay.
Separate village designations and they are in turn, and the renewals are, the applications were submitted separately at different times. So now the renewal date, uh, dates are sort of stacked. The, um, I think the center will be up again in 2025, but I'll have to check that.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so we're talking about the flats. We're also only just talking here about the Underhill side of the flats, as we all know. The town line between Underhill and Jericho goes through the neighborhood, community, village, whatever you wanna call it, known as Riverside Flats. But what we're discussing, and that area, where parts of that area hold this designation of Village Center, which is itself a special designation through this program that we'll discuss. So when we're, I just wanna make clear what we're talking about tonight is renewing the area of, the designation for the area of Underhill that is currently in this, this, that is enrolled in this program, the Village Center. Jericho has to basically do their own version of this process and their own application in order to do, to take care of their side. They have the same due date of August, um, as we do, but I've talked with the specialists and I've talked with Jericho's planner and it seems like the most efficient way to, there's no real set, uh, way for a joint application to be renewed because this is the only joint designation in the state of Vermont. So what they said is, uh, what will suffice is separate applications from each town stating what they want in the renewal, acknowledging their counterparts in the other town that that process is going.
So Jericho's is at the same time.
Jericho's will be due at the same time, but, um, uh, from what I've gotten from this, the state specialist, there's no need for us to work directly with Jericho in order to renew the designation as long as they're, as long as Jericho's, um, application or red designation application matches ours. As for the same thing.
How, how extensive is this application?
Um, you're basically seeing it. We're missing a couple small pieces of information. But, uh, other than that, I've included basically everything, so we can just go through it. The first, um, I'll direct your attention to this renewal checklist sheet here in your packets. This is, uh, from the program that I'm talking about. And it's just a basic overview of what the application, redesignation process. Um, that's followed by a sheet with the program benefits, in case you're curious about what those are. I can actually jump to those real fast. The basic program, the basic benefits of the program is that owners of historic properties and some residences within these designated Village Centers get priority on, um, state grants for applications. They also get, they also are eligible for tax credits for facade improvements. Let's see, what else? Code improvement, so, you know, fire codes, sprinklers, electrical, insulation, that sort of stuff. Safety, ADA compliance, sort of a basic building maintenance that you might have to do in a historic or older building is made a little bit easier by owning a building in one of these designated Village Centers. So for instance, if, let's say, uh, Jacob's Market wanted to reconstruct its facade on the street-facing side, they, they would be eligible to apply for a tax credit through, you know, to help support that. And this is what we have to do as a town in order to enable them of, of getting that tax credit.
So is it all federal, uh, support basically?
I'm not sure where the original money comes from, but it's a state administers program.
State administers.
Yeah, so we'd only be dealing with state employees and state agencies in this private, during this process. Yeah. Let's see.
I mean, does anybody in town ever actually use any of these?
That's a good question. So far, I'm unaware of anyone actually doing, doing it, yeah. That doesn't mean that they haven't, but I'm unaware of it, yeah. You know, let's face it, there aren't an awful lot of commercial buildings in, in Underhill Flats or in the center. That doesn't mean that there couldn't be more.
Much less historic.
Yeah, much less historic. However, the definition of historic is pretty loose, I think you could say. I believe it's, the cutoff is like 1970 or something like that, so.
Historic, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Can I get a facade? Who could use that?
You know, one way this could potentially use, even though it hasn't been used before, is it lists, you get per reconsideration for these grants, which includes in our water and wastewater subsidies and loans.
Yes, yes, it does. And that's an important, thank you for drawing attention to that, Brian. It does, um, it does open up some doors for municipal grants, um, or state grants to municipalities, that could, that could prove useful depending on, on what people in that area wanted.
I, I had one other question.
Yeah.
Is this, I know you said that you looked at it and you can't expand the nodes to include where the new development is, um, you know, for the church.
Yeah.
But, um.
It's probably been half a mile.
What about, yeah, I saw that. What about this neighborhood development area?
So.
I see you referenced it in the letter, but you didn't say anything about the neighborhood development.
Yes, so I talked to Richard about that. What he told me is that, um, Richard is the program specialist at the state who, um, handles incoming applications for this program. And he told me that that would be a separate application. Kind of like we started from scratch.
To expand the Village Center.
To, it's not, well, not really expanding it per se, but converting it to a neighborhood development area. So, or a Village Center with a neighborhood development area. And the neighborhood development area, you can see on the benefits page here, explains that, but it essentially, it adds on some extra tax benefits that are otherwise on, not included in this program to areas within a quarter mile of that edge. So you can imagine a quarter mile buffer. So we could actually pull it, pull it up on the website here.
So when we did this, we created the Village Center for the flats.
Yeah.
Didn't it include Phil Jacobs' land?
No, and it wouldn't be eligible.
The only land that was big enough to do anything on.
So, yeah, just to be clear.
We clearly would have.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
The designated Village Center program is really there to sort of like catalog, describe and preserve existing historic areas, places that have been, that have been developed for quite some time and which, you know, people would like to keep developed and keep vibrant. The neighborhood development, uh, area seems to be a more recent addition to the program that allows people to start to foster and encourage incremental growth out of those areas. So, uh, you can kind of think of like, the Village Center designation helps kind, is there to stimulate infill development and redevelopment within areas that have always been or, you know, in living memory have always been developed. Whereas the neighborhood development area, uh, you know, add-on is, i- is, is there to take that concept and just spread it geographically wider, adjacent, in areas adjacent to these established areas of development, commerce, walkability, you know, housing, whatever.
So we could do that.
We could do that. We could apply for that.
So that's just another application.
It is another application.
So we could expand beyond where it already exists.
Yeah, the benefits would be a little bit different. So instead of getting historic tax benefits in the quarter mile buffer, you'd be eligible, that, you know, property owners in that, uh, quarter mile buffer would be eligible for these things, these benefits. Yeah, exemption from 50% for priority housing, exemption from land gains taxed for housing units sold, eligible for reduced state permit fees. If the planning commission felt that that was something worth pursuing, then that would be a different application. We'd be having a different, we should probably get ready for a different conversation. But, um, as it stands right now, um, what I, the application I've put together is simply renewal of the, of the currently held designation. And there's a few more steps in getting that approved, and I can go into those. But, yeah, that's, that's what I put together so far. But, you know, that doesn't mean that that is, that is necessarily the best fit for Underhill. That's just, um, what I put together to sort of start this conversation. And I figured that our questions like this would come up.
Could we look at the map?
Yes.
So we can all understand.
Yes.
Where it is and where it should be expanded if possible.
So, um, just a note, in, a little farther along in this packet that I put in there, there's an excerpt from the town plan, the last page, has a more specific GIS generated version, but I'll pull up a live version.
We can look at the paper one.
Yeah, the paper one shows what it's, where it is.
Oh, yeah.
The, yeah, the, the one on the online, which I'm gonna pull up, has a useful tool to visualize the potential buffer, which might be, people might be interested in seeing. So I'm gonna do that. And Sandy, please let me know if you can or cannot see this. Or if you're concerned with any of this.
So I, I can't tell which is.
Yeah.
What is that?
A lot going on.
Which is it? Which is Underhill?
I think it's the next map one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's this.
But which is it? I mean, I'm looking at.
I think it's the red, the red border, I think.
Yep.
So part of Park Street, um, very small part of Park Street.
Yeah, red, red border shows the outside boundaries. You'll notice the bottom left hand is, part that's in Jericho, so it's been shaded out.
Wow, not much.
Not a whole lot.
I believe they didn't include Park Street, all of it.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
So if the timeline is the seventies, historically, you know, all the way across the bridge and that brick area, uh, just starting up Poker Hill Road, you know, that was all part of the historic village. So, um, and as well as some of the homes going up Homestead Avenue being built in seventies, it seems like it would be advantageous for us to expand, to include those areas as well. But you probably know more about, you know, what the criteria of.
A little bit. And the answer to that is, I, I did ask Richard about that and he, uh, pretty firmly told me that that would not be, we would not be eligible for expanding further north up 15. The reason being that the program criteria called for a commercial, um, building to sort of, or, or commercial user site to anchor the outside bound or the extreme outside boundaries of the Village Center. So it's like, what they're looking for is the area that has mixed uses of commercial and historic occupation. So what they chose is, uh, uh, 426 Vermont Route 15, which has a repaired garage on it.
So is that, sorry, I should know this better, but I'm not over here a ton. So is, is the end of it, is the end of it on the other side of the street? Is that like Four House Pies or?
Yes, so we got, exactly. So we got Four House Pies on one side of the street, so that's one commercial node. And then Underhill Garage, uh, on the east side of the street to burn, to show the forest.
And there's no other commercial business going north.
Um, not that we've identified, although if there's new information, you know, I'm, I'm definitely open to hearing.
Does anybody know about?
So they don't consider multifamily rentals commercial?
Not, well, it'd have to be over five. Banking-wise, four units or less is.
So like Jurassic Park?
I don't know how many people, how many units.
I don't know. I thought.
Well, four would be considered residential.
Oh, okay. Because that would bring it down.
According to the lending institutions.
That would bring it farther down.
So the post office, there's like, the post office is in it, right?
Yes.
But then, and then there's this whole section here that's not between, there's.
Post office and the cemetery. Are you looking at the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then, but then over like Harvest Run, it's not part of.
Harvest Run's not part of it.
No.
And pretty small room.
And my understanding is that would be due to the, um, well, the, and the lack of a commercial node anchored out there and also the fact that it's fairly recent.
Yeah, right, none, none of that was built before this was designated.
Exactly, yeah. I mean, I think it had been designated, I think it had been built before this was designated.
Part, yeah, much of Harvest Run was, not up.
Yeah, just the, right behind the post office.
But, um, but again, it's still new enough that it wouldn't easily qualify for, for designation under this.
How's everybody feel about expanding it? I guess a question. Should we expand it or?
I'm in favor.
I am too. I'm looking at this like, even though there's no commercial structures or buildings on it, if you expand it, somebody decides to build one. I mean, Gertz is not even, oh, yes it is.
It is.
No, Gertz is included.
I mean, I'd love to expand it, but Nick, are you saying that this Richard guy told you that it's impossible? Or what is it that he said?
Um, no, uh, he told me, he told me that based on, so he told me that based on what we are seeing here, it would be unlikely that we would be eligible for simply expanding the, like, redrawing the line under the basic criteria of the program. Because of what we just talked about, you know, lack of historic housing directly adjacent to it, or if it'll nodes, this sort of stuff. If we wanted to apply for a neighborhood development area, the NDA, which is the, again, the quarter mile buffer around it, that would be a separate application that is exclusive from, separate from, yeah, separate from doing this what I've just suggested here, um, but could be pursued regardless.
But that, that sounds like it was like a hard no on the actual expansion.
On the actual, on the actual expansion of the designated Village Center. And the NDA and the Village Center are different things.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
But for tonight.
But for tonight.
Our purpose is, for tonight, you want us to do what?
I wanted you to weigh in on this, ask any questions that you felt needed to be asked. Write any feedback that needed to be provided. And I was hoping that the, or I am expecting that the results of the, of tonight could either be, you take a look at it, decide it's all, what I've provided is all good, and ask me to forward this on to the Select Board with minutes. I was planning on including minutes from the meeting saying, looks like everyone likes it. Select Board, we need now your sign off on this. Or, um, for the planning commission to take a look at this and say, actually, I think there's more we could do, or I don't like the idea, and Nick, we'd like you and anyone else to like, look, look to this further and come back with a different idea or something along those lines, basically. So there's, you know.
I'm trying to understand our range of choices.
Yeah.
It sounds like the guy told you, paraphrased.
Yeah.
You can't expand it. It is what it is.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm not trying to get you here.
Not in the designated Village Center.
Yeah.
What you can only expand is the neighborhood development area.
Right, which is a whole separate.
And that's different. So based on what we know and we already have.
No choices.
Do we say, yeah, you're named to the choice that we have?
Yeah.
No choice in the rock.
Is that the way you?
Yeah, right.
That's the way you see it, Nick, is that there's not a lot of choices here, like.
Yeah, I would agree. I, I think Brian's, Brian's description is pretty good. We don't, I don't think we have, it seems like we don't have a lot of choices to simply expand the, the, um, the actual designated area. I think our hands are tied on that. Uh, and I recommend that we approve that, what we have and move forward. I guess I just wanted to kind of get your, like I said, get your feedback on that. I wasn't sure what you would think about the idea of the neighborhood development area on as well, so I didn't really recommend it hard one way or another. I would be in favor of Underhill pursuing that, for sure.
So that would seem to be the way to open up the Village to a larger area. I think once you get the development going, then you can say, well, here, we've already got this development now.
Yeah.
We want to expand the designated area.
I think there are a lot of good reasons for it, yeah, definitely.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I think I was reading this and not paying attention.
Sure.
Yeah, neighborhood development eligibility. Yeah, neighborhood development eligibility, we can do that. We can have, so. And I don't know, it seems like that's something you should do because, you know, exempt from Act two fifty regulations, like what the church wanted to do with that land, it would be exempt from any Act two fifty.
Potentially.
Thing that they wanted.
Yeah.
But he also, who owns land in that area and wants to change.
So this is not gonna come under Act two fifty? It's not gonna be five, five, five or ten, ten? Would, would not come under Act two fifty?
The.
Phil Jacobsland.
Well, if they decide to add more houses to it, it would have been nine, ten houses.
Let's bring Sandy back, cause she's involved in that. I think that's kind of done deal.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, in, going forward, there probably won't be anything like that.
I don't know where there is, is any other land like that within a quarter mile area. I think we should do it. Maybe that would open up something further. If they looked at this plan and thought in the end they could do even more, that'd be good.
Would you like to see the, the buffer? We can visualize that there.
I wanted to hear what Sandy said. Sandy's involved.
I had a couple more questions about, um, the area and then I, I can get back to what you were suggesting. I'm, I'm looking at two areas right now. So behind the, the old garage there is a bluish area on this map. No, it's a, um, it's a vacant lot. So I wonder why that's part of the designation. And, um, and then if you go up on Poker Hill Road, just past the brick house. They have an emporium there. So isn't that a business that we could anchor it to?
What's the import, what is that, Sandy? A, a what?
Uh, it's an emporium business that, uh, they have there.
Where?
It's an emporium.
Where are you referring to?
It's the, if you start up Poker Hill Road on the left, there's the brick house. And then the next house has an emporium. It's only open in the summer, but it is a business.
Well, she runs a little daycare out of there too. You're talking about Chris?
No, I'm not talking about Chris. It's before that.
But it's on Poker Hill Road.
Right.
Here, it's intersection with fifteen.
Is that like a theater or?
No, it's, I don't know that it's anything yet.
Market.
A market.
I know the word is emporium, I don't know the next word.
I don't.
I have no idea what she sells.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that's, I'm not sure if that would qualify based on, on what, what, uh, Richard has told me. I'm a little doubtful it would, but it's probably worth asking about. I could, I could go back and, uh.
Sounds like it.
And talk to him about it, yeah.
I mean, you've got us in such a good place with this draft letter that we have time, right?
I think so. We have until the end of August. So, um, there is time definitely to play around a little bit with the map.
You guys may, you guys really not remember that.
I think Brad's stepping in to.
Are we all okay with him moving closer to the application as is?
What I.
They're expanding it.
You're probably right.
Well, we do that.
Well, that's an open question though. It sounds like Sandy is maybe suggesting that Nick, instead of submitting, just Nick reach back out to Richard and say, hey, there's this emporium here. Could that be the commercial anchor for this north on fifteen? If I'm understanding what.
Well, that's not Poker Hill Road though. It's not three fifteen. So that's real residential already.
That may still be inside the zoning district. I don't, zoning districts are a little, are the, they appear to be less interested in which zoning district it's in or if it crosses multiple zoning districts than their own criteria for what constitutes a, you know, a historic, uh, village. So, um, I'm not sure if that would be, uh, a drawback for making that, in making that case. But the distance might be, um, I'm not sure. I, I'll have, I, I'd be happy to check with Richard to see what else, to see, to see what his, you know, sort of initial take on that proposal would be.
It does look like it's in, it's still in our, uh, village zoning district though. Cause that goes up a little ways on, onto Poker Hill Road.
It does, yeah, it does. Yeah, the lower part of Poker Hill is included in.
But it could be the neighborhood, whatever, if nothing else.
So, uh, Sandy, did you have more questions or feedback?
Um, I just was curious why the vacant lot was included since there's nothing, no structure.
Probably backs right up to the fire station, doesn't it?
Used to be a junkyard.
Junkyard, yeah.
Yeah. That's what I heard, yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, what the logic was in including that. I think probably just, uh, Andrew at all sought to make it as large as possible and it has a historic use for, that's tied to the rest of the community. So even though maybe vacant now, they were able to include it. I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't care if we leave it. I, I just, it seemed odd to have it there.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I think, I think it would be, I think for the purposes of just getting an application out, it would definitely be easier to leave it in. Um, and, you know, the added benefit is that, um, if anything built on there would qualify for some of these, you know, for some of these, uh, uh, benefits with a, with a program. So I don't see a drawback leaving it in.
Yeah, but the junkyard, this would be something there.
That's, that's true. There may be some mitigation we need to do. I'm gonna throw up the, uh, the boundary. So we can see here with this buffer.
That's significant.
It is, it is significant. It includes, you know, up to, almost to the intersection with Poker Hill Road. This whole area behind, uh, you know, on the side of three fifteen, below, uh, the brook, uh, all of the Jacobs Hill, uh, properties, except for this one up here that's already developed. So it's significant area.
You mean the neighborhood?
The neighbor, the potential neighborhood development area, yeah. And I can't confirm, but I believe Jericho was considering doing something similar for theirs.
But it's just huge.
It is. It includes a lot of, a lot of existing development. Um, so basically what we would need, um, to complete this, I'm just gonna check things as I go here. We have cover letter with name of municipality, narrative, notes about infrastructure and contact information. We have.
My email doesn't have a dot.
Oh, it doesn't, okay. I actually don't think that's an issue for Gmail, but I will edit it nonetheless. Um, we have.
I mean, I'm not getting any emails. You can wait to type mine.
We also have, um, evidence that the municipal plan explains how the designation furthers the goals. Uh, I've included a couple pages to speak directly to the village, the plans for the, the village centers in the, the municipal plan. And then lastly, I've included the map. That's what we've been considering on that last page. That's directly pulled from our, uh, Unit twenty twenty-one municipal plan, which leaves the only two items for, to put it together, a renewal application, minutes from the select board where they approve the application as it's written, and a letter from CCRPC that states our planning process is confirmed under, uh, state statute.
Have you requested that yet?
I have not requested that yet. Yeah. Um, I haven't because I was looking for it because I thought it might have already been generated for the purposes of passing the town plan. I couldn't find anything signed by RPC staff. So I think I might have to reach out directly for that.
Could you mind requesting that?
Yeah.
Even if we decided to reach out to Richard, ask you to reach out to Richard, we could still get that CCRPC letter going.
Yeah. Yeah, I can do that for sure. And they, um, they should be able to, to generate that pretty easily. They're very involved in the, in the town plan.
So how do people feel about this? Are people generally more inclined to send this in as is or?
Well, I don't think, or have the option of changing it.
Or going back to Richard and asking, oh, wait, there is this emporium. Can we use that as the commercial business to tie the north end? Which seems to be what Sandy is saying. I understand.
I like the idea of expanding. It gives you more leeway down the road.
They, they will.
If they will, yeah.
So we ask a question if they say no.
Then we didn't lose anything.
And then if we say yes, we need to fill out more in an application.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that would be, you know, that would require probably a, I'd have to add to the, the cover letter noting that we wish to expand it rather than simply, um, continue it, uh, work up a, um, a draft map showing what it is, you know, what we hope that the new boundaries would be. And then submit, and then of course, like, you know, the select board would have to sign off on, on the plan, on that plan.
Will you have time to do that before you leave?
Honestly, probably not.
Okay, so that's my concern.
Well, Brad has told me that he.
Does Brad know about this?
Yeah, Brad knows about this.
No, no, no. I mean about trying to expand the.
Yes.
Okay.
And Brad has told me that he has some time, famous last words from Brad. He has some time over the summer to help fill in for Nick in his apps.
The other thing too is I can do the research with Richard because I know him.
You can, at least that's the question.
I can talk to him and try to get an answer. And if the answer is, sure, maybe send us a draft map with your application and we'll, and we'll get back to you on it. If he says, yeah, that's potentially okay, we'll have to see, you know, the, 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 your application for it. Then Brad is quite good with GIS and could probably work up the required materials faster than I could and, and more accurately. So I don't think that the, um, I don't think that, that adding that would be a huge lift.
No, but that question, would you be able to ask the question to?
Oh, yeah, I can talk to Richard.
All right. If you would do that before you left, that would be good. Then we wouldn't have to make that decision tonight.
Yeah.
Is everyone good with that?
Yeah, I'm good, right.
And I'll look into the neighborhood development area, uh, process while I'm at it, if people want me to do that. So.
That'd be great.
We can have some more information about it. Yeah.
If you can. I'm feeling your next couple weeks will be busy.
They are gonna be busy. But I'll see if I can get Richard to, uh, send some, some, um, info over or, or see if he can take an initial take on what it would, give us an initial take on what that would look like for that, that kind of application would look like. I don't think it's something that would need to be submitted along with a, with a renewal. I believe from our conversations, my understanding is that it's something that could, we could do the renewal and then come back and say, hey, we'd also like to add this, this.
That would be the second question to add.
Yeah.
So ask the question, can we possibly expand it because of this?
Mm-hmm.
Two, if we can expand it, but it's gonna take more time, can we say yes to this, what we have, and add this in?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And the third thing would be to know about, more about the neighborhood designation area.
So can we expand? And if so, what do you need?
And when would you need it?
Yep. I think the, the when is still August.
Okay.
It's our deadline for renewing is end of twenty twenty-three.
So.
I got a question about this, the emporium. Like, does it even, is it a permitted commercial business?
Most likely.
No, it's residential.
Yeah, most likely not. I don't know of a home occupation permit for that area, but.
Could be pre.
Yeah, pre-existing non-conformant, yeah.
Well, Chris Black has a in-home occupation there. Sandy, what, no, it isn't. Sandy, what is the emporium? What is it?
Um, it, it's just a, a small building with, where she's selling art and a variety of things, yeah.
Okay.
And this is before Chris Black's place. It's the brick place down flat.
It's not the brick one. There's another, there's a white house after that.
White, black shutters, right?
Okay.
Right before you go up the hill? Right before Chris's house. I forgot there's something between Chris and the.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a permitted commercial enterprise and. It's acting, I guess, but.
S O L?
Yeah. We'd be wasting a lot of time on something.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a question you can ask. The question, this is what we believe the emporium is. Would that qualify for the kind of anchor, um, commercial business? I think no, but why not ask? No.
All right. All right. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Yeah.
So we'll, um, we'll go up on that before you go. You can just update this to the record, right? So I need info for the next meeting.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you. Anything else on the village center designation before we go back to the bios? Number, number one thing on the bios, Nick, just so I don't forget.
Yeah.
Before you go, I have to, have to, have to get that master.
Yeah.
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 And we will give it to Brad.
I think, I think you'd be the perfect person there.
I'm gonna fill this screen here. Just so I don't leave the office.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, it's not going anywhere. Um, that's for sure. Um, yeah.
I mean, I think this is the David Edson Show.
We had, um, section four point. It's an orphan. Unfortunately, my computer is not working. In struggle, the bottom. Wait, Ron, wait, what section, what four?
Uh, this is David.
Yeah.
Four one five, okay.
Yeah, so what we did is we, we cut out, we dealt with non-conforming accessory dwelling unit. Because Nick was, um, indicating that it seems to be a permitted, um, thing for a non-conforming, uh, lot, basically. So, but anyway, I thought it would be important to, um, deal with the accessory structure and accessory dwelling units. So we had talked about, um, allowing detached accessory dwelling units in accessory structures that are up to where accessory structures can be with a setback, which is less than from a primary dwelling. And so the question is, can you put the accessory dwelling in the structure even though a primary dwelling is not allowed in that area? Because it's too close to the, um.
But there's already an accessory structured there.
Yeah, or proposed. But I'm saying that maybe it's just the simplest and best thing to do is to allow a detached accessory dwelling unit within a structure that is set back according to structures of where it's structured can be set by.
Because it's not a primary dwelling?
Yeah.
So do you keep the same setbacks?
Yeah, the same setback for a structure or a.
Detached building.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's call it that, because it detached building, structure.
Yeah.
But it is not a dwelling.
It's not a dwelling.
So an accessory, a, a structure is not a dwelling unit. So let's make it, let's call it non-dwelling, just to keep it simple.
Yeah.
But I think that's a good idea. As long as it has, it has to meet the water, wastewater regulations.
Yeah, right. All the other things.
Right. I'm okay with that.
So, so just to clarify this, you're saying to keep the, keep the setbacks the same for dwellings and structures?
No.
Well, changing, well, we're changing them in the, um.
No, he's not saying that.
In the districts anyway. We, we had agreed to, uh, reduce the, or make them equal, I think.
Yeah, the same.
Yeah, but not in the outlawing area. Those ones we, uh, that's kept with the primary dwelling in certain spots. But you can put a structure closer to the boundary, basically, in the other districts.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's it.
So I'm saying that, okay, you got a structure there. We will allow an accessory dwelling within that structure, even though primary dwelling is not allowed in.
Right.
It's just a simpler way of dealing with the whole thing rather than saying you can't put a, um, dwelling in that because it's, that's, but you can't put.
Right, yeah. So that's already.
Yeah.
An, an existing structure that somebody wants to.
Or, or propose. Somebody wants, somebody wants to put a.
Propose would be different. Are you proposing to put a structure there or are you proposing to put an ADU?
It, it wouldn't matter in this case.
Cause it'd be minus the same setback. This is like, yeah, this is.
Because it's not primary dwelling.
Yes.
So the setback is the same as any other structure.
Yeah.
Even for an ADU. I'm okay with that.
I am too.
Okay, yeah. It makes it, um, allows a, uh, accessory dwelling unit to be closer to the boundary, basically. And it just makes it more liberal for the accessory.
Yeah, the only.
Dwelling units.
The only thing I see about proposed is neighbors getting worried that the accessory dwelling unit becomes the, you know, the Airbnb where there's people. you know, the Airbnb where there's people constantly coming and going and it's right in their backyard as opposed to at least twenty feet away.
I mean, that one hundred percent.
Twenty feet away, most of the boundaries.
It's, yeah.
Most of the time, it's more than twenty feet in most of the districts, thing.
It's on the sidelines, it's twenty feet.
Yeah, the back is.
From the side and rear, it's, it's twenty five.
Yeah.
Rural districts.
We have to look, we should look at the chart, so we need to, we can do that, yeah. Does anybody have that chart for setback requirements for accessory?
It's got.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so the setback in, all right, then we, we decided to equalize the under-hill blocks, Village Center and the Center Building.
Yeah, so there are, so according to the changes that the planning commission has voted to approve, there will no longer be the difference between the principal and accessory setbacks in the village, in the, in the village, the zoning districts that are for the villages.
That makes sense.
And.
The lots are smaller.
Yeah. Um, so there is, you can basically, these, these numbers here, you can ignore, they don't.
The fifteen and the twelve?
Yes, as we're discussing these proposed changes, you can ignore those there. The same, the, the numbers for the principal prevail for all structures in.
Yeah, there's not bigger than a twenty-five foot setback might be, or that's for, if you have to. The setbacks, I think a setback is thirty-five feet?
Well, for, well, for a primary, primary structure, it's.
Yeah.
They're greater than they are for an accessory.
There's just saying, there's really no difference between primary and accessory structures in the Underhill Village Center. You get one set of setbacks for anything built on that, on those lots.
Right.
Um, the distinction will be retained for the four rural zoning districts such as they are. And so that principal structures will be, all structures will be subject to a thirty-foot setback from the.
The front.
Right away from the front edge. All structures, but accessory structures will be held to a lower standard for setbacks, will continue to be held to a lower standard for setbacks. They'll have a more generous setback of only twenty feet from the side and rear lot lines of those.
Versus what were they, thirty-five?
Not making any, no, you look right there. Yeah, no changes, no changes proposed to, so, so far the only changes to the actual setbacks that the planning commission has approved is the elimination of the difference between accessory and primary setbacks in the village centers. Everything else will remain the same, so we're not changing any, any, any distances or anything like that. David is, is, David's language attempts to clarify which setbacks apply to which, which of these setbacks, as they are written here, apply to which uses and buildings and whatnot, in, in particular to ADUs that are being proposed. So we need to add another line in here for ADUs and they'll have.
No.
No, he has it in here.
No, we, we, it's included in.
Okay.
And a detached accessory dwelling unit is allowed as a permanent use in our existing or proposed access, in an existing or proposed accessory structure that is in conformance with the district regulation. So you're just saying a structure, a proposed structure? So if they're gonna, yeah, okay.
So a new structure, somebody wants to build a new structure and an accessory dwelling unit is gonna have the same setback as accessory.
As an, as a structure.
Yeah.
As an accessory structure.
Yeah.
Right.
So if you, let's say you live in.
Dwelling and the structure will have the same equal setbacks.
So you're.
Accessory dwelling and a accessory structure.
Have the same.
Exactly. So dwelling, dwelling and structure, which just makes the.
A lot of terms flying around, indeed. Does everybody understand, I guess?
I understand it, I think I'm in a distinct minority, but just for the record, like, I don't agree with it. In like the, some of these districts where you're taking it from like seventy-five foot setback to twenty feet.
Twenty-five, where's the seventy?
So in Mount Mansfield and Soil and Water Conservation, uh, zoning districts, you can't place a house within seventy-five feet of your lot line. Like a primary.
Which is, I think, when these were probably drafted, obviously it wasn't here, but it was intended to keep a certain distance between buildings in which people were living.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're saying, well, you can put an Airbnb twenty feet from a.
I worry about that.
Which, well, it's one hundred percent exactly what's gonna happen.
Well, that's what I say, something is.
Yeah.
I, that's why a proposed structure I have initially.
So.
If it's existing already but proposed, it's already there.
Yeah, you know, that gets into a situation, you're just putting an accessory.
And then flip it a year.
And the next year.
So I got, I got, I just had one, a counterpoint.
Oh, no, I know, I know, most people disagree, I'm putting it out there for the.
But I mean, just, just hear me out here. So you're thinking your lot, and when you build it, if you want to build an accessory dwelling unit, you're logically not gonna put it right next to your neighbor's house if you have a block.
Or, or you're gonna put, counterpoint to your counterpoint, you're gonna put it close to your neighbor's house and not so close to your house.
So before we get too far down the road of, of site plan review, I just.
The which one? The pink structure next to the little warriors? Next to where? Long time ago, they put up that pink pen.
Oh, yeah.
Right down the line.
By the way.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a rule that said the ADU needed to be within X feet of your house.
Oh, yeah, okay, so, yeah, so I was gonna.
And you're sort of treating your neighbor like you're treating yourself, and that to me is a different story.
So here's what I wanted to do, I wanted to, before we get too far into the discussion, I wanted to just supply everyone with sort of the constraints that exist that all, that apply here, and then a few options for modifying this. So we'll start with the constraints. Imagine this, so if, if, if this were to be adopted as David has written it, the constraints that would still apply to something like a detached accessory dwelling unit or whatever, a accessory dwelling unit that is proposed, let's say twenty feet from someone's lot line, that would, the, one constraint is that, um, we have these things called performance standards. They are measured at the lot line and they include things like noise, visual disturbance, emissions, um, and they're quite detailed. They have, you know, decibel, uh, amounts, we can actually go to these on the.
Yeah.
On these, so we have, so all of those apply regardless of where they're coming from. You can't, you know, you, 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 you could, you could have a, um, let's say, a, you could have, if you have your house and you're just, you know, burning stuff and it's causing noxious fumes, even if your house is like located outside of the, the minimum setbacks, you're still violating the performance standards, you're gonna get a.
I think you just went violation.
Yeah, here we go. So noise and, so, uh, noise in excess of sixty decibels, as, as not the result of occasional customary activities.
Occasional.
Yeah, uh, vibration, smoke dust, noxious gases.
Weekend.
Releases, yeah. Exactly. Blair, light, reflection, which constitutes a nuisance to other property owners, um, waste, uh, undue safety or explosive or fire, um, stuff. So all of these agricultural oper, uh, operations to the point of the pink pen, um, these are all sort of general catch-all, you can't, you know, basically harass your neighbor over the, by using your property as a refuge for, for the, for the harassing activity, essentially. So.
Can go either way.
It can go either way. Yeah, exactly. So those still apply. The other thing is that most houses aren't, themselves are not built on a property line. So even if you are, let's say you push it right up to the twenty-foot minimum setback, the neck in your, and the concern is, oh, what impact does this have on a house on the adjacent property? That house is still, still has to follow, it's generally speaking, has to follow its own, that, that lots, the adjacent lots minimum setbacks.
We're supposed to ninety-five feet away.
Ninety-five feet away and some of those, exactly, seventy feet and others. You have non-conforming lots, however, and so not, so there are houses that are located closer to prop, like within what would now be a setback, you know, so that doesn't cover everyone. Um, let's see, and then the third one, the third basic check on that, on this issue is that all zoning permits, this would require a zoning permit, all zoning permits are appealable, and the, abutting landowners have a right to appeal zoning.
To, to environmental court.
To environmental.
The expense would be incurred by.
Yeah.
The, the neighbor.
Also very.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, so that was, that was one of the, my arguments is if somebody doesn't like the idea that you're gonna put a house twenty feet from the property line, accessory dwelling, twenty feet from the property line, they can appeal it.
Yeah.
Environmental court.
They can, they can.
Well, you have to have a reason, and if it's, um, if you're allowed to build up to the twenty-foot area, what's the reason that opposes it?
Yeah, you have a pretty weak case, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah. You say, well, there's a party going on every weekend, well, it's occasional.
Yeah, so to the DRB, and the DRB would.
I think the complaint would come back here first, I don't think it would go to the environmental court right away.
The other thing too is, I forgot to mention is access, and, uh, uh, you know, duly permitted ADU would have to have its own access and parking, and not everyone's gonna wanna put, uh, you know, that would, that would require a modified access permit if it's not built on an existing driveway.
Right.
So, you know, these are, again, these are not like legal or regulatory constraints, but they are sort of practical constraints derived from our regulatory practice, our regulatory body that might, um, discourage that kind of, the kind of, like, the most impactful version of what we're talking about, you know, the most negatively impactful version or consequence of this. So those are the, those are sort of like the ways that I could see this being, be, yeah, be, the negative effects being mitigated or, um, precluded simply by what we already have existing. Now, the other tools that you mentioned would be what, what you just mentioned, Brian. The, there could be, uh, this could, you know, you could pass this whole thing and then sit, and say, but also there's this other rule that we made up, you have to keep your ADU within a certain distance of your house. The other option would be, instead of saying that it is a permitted use, make it a permitted use with site plan review, which would, which would require that eighty, what potential applicants for an ADU under these circumstances would have to go for the DRB for a one-time hearing, so the DRB could weigh in.
Yeah, I thought about this, too.
Yeah.
Thought about this from the point of view that if you have, if you put that in there, would, if a neighbor decides that they don't like it, then, then it would go to the DRB.
Yeah.
For site plan review, but if the neighbor's okay with it, then it wouldn't go to site plan review. Can you do that?
Um, I don't think, I don't know if we could do that, my gut says probably not, um, but, uh, yeah, I guess it's probably not. I think.
I don't.
I guess, I was, I guess my, my vision was if they, was, would be to word it so that these sort of edge cases where someone was putting an ADU closer to, in an area that might disturb a neighbor, would go to site plan review, whereas if you wanted to just put one in your front yard next to your driveway already, that wouldn't be an issue. Now, that would require some, it would require more precise language than what we're working with now and would invite other problems. So I'm not necessarily suggesting that, I'm just bringing that up as a possible, a possible, like, avenue.
It invites problems.
So it does create problems, yeah. All of these option tools have their own, you know.
Well, one other thing we could do is just increase the, um, uh, front side and rear, uh, amounts for the other areas for accessory structures.
What other?
Dwelling units.
So I mean, right now, it's twenty feet from the sideline or the, uh, rear line for an accessory structure in all, um, other four districts, rural, residential, et cetera. It's thirty feet for the front, twenty and twenty in all four districts. If we made it thirty feet, thirty feet, thirty feet, you know, it just sets it back thirty feet from the sidelines or the rear line. We would change that, we'd make it more restrictive.
For all accessory structures, you're saying?
Yes.
You can do that?
More restrictive for all property owners, basically.
Well, yeah, I don't know about that, because I think if you live in, on a three-acre lot, and I've worked on two, three and five-acre lots, that if the accessory structure wasn't twenty feet from the property line, and I can think of three in particular that I've actually built, that that, that it would just be really, a really convoluted situation to put them thirty or forty feet away. You know, you know what I'm saying? It, they were much better twenty feet away. They were better twenty feet away because the other house was a hundred feet over there, but if they had to be thirty feet away, it would have been.
And you're talking.
Pretty good size.
Yeah.
It depends on the three acre.
Yeah, like my lot is very restricted, and I've worked on a few that were very restricted as far as setbacks go, so.
I don't know what the answer is on this.
I, well, I, I think that that you leave out the proposed accessory structure.
No, because you just end up with, um, um, you just wanna put it in an accessory structure, that's all, period. I'm gonna put it there, two years later, oh, I wanna put an accessory dwelling into it now.
So, but however, if you propose it as an accessory structure, then you say it's an accessory structure now and forever. You can't then change the use of it. You're saying you're building an accessory structure. Well, I'm sorry, but you said you're building an accessory structure, that's why you're in these setbacks, but if you wanna change it, you can't do it because you're no longer in the setbacks for the accessory dwelling.
Well, and we could say for accessory dwelling, detached accessory dwelling units, they would have to be a certain distance from the, uh, borders.
I think that's the way you handle it.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I think that's the way you handle it.
I don't know, thirty feet or, um.
Gosh, it depends on a lot, yeah.
Everything is contingent.
Well, yeah, no, but, you know, I hate to, um.
What do we have now?
Over to the. What do we have now? Well, the question is.
If somebody wants an accessory dwelling unit on their property, what are?
Well, I think if.
It goes with the primary.
Yeah, it has to meet the primary dwelling characteristics. So that would be fifty feet, seventy-five feet.
No, it's not.
No.
I actually haven't been enforcing it like that, what I've been going off of is whether or not it is pertinent.
Some primary dwelling in, in all four districts, a primary dwelling has to be fifty feet from the side or rear in two areas, seventy-five feet from the other two areas. You wanna put the accessory dwellings in the same restricted characteristics as the primary dwelling?
That's not the way to do it now, that's not how he's, that's not how.
Yeah, that's not how I'm enforcing it, I mean, like, what I.
Well, I'm sort of saying, I don't know, how, how are you?
Well, no, it's just saying that, though. But yeah, it's not quite that clear. Our, our guidelines, our, our language that for describing what is and what is not a legal, a conforming, you know, accessory dwelling unit aren't so clear on which setbacks to use, why we have to determine them now, and I've been going off of.
Says it have, you have to meet the, um, um, same characteristics as the primary.
No, no, it says it can't be more restrictive than those. It doesn't say they have to be identical to them.
Well, I think it has to be defined, if not.
I don't know, I got, I go through accessory dwelling units that were actually in the accessory structure setbacks. And you know what I'm saying?
That's what he's saying, that is exactly what.
No, they were, they were not in the, in the, uh, not within the primary dwelling setback.
Yeah.
Which is way more restrictive than the accessory structure.
You did exactly what this rule at draft did.
Yeah, that's what David was saying.
You did what David wrote here.
Yeah, yeah, following, yeah, yeah. Currently, that's how we're dealing with. Effectively, we are already doing this.
Yeah.
When you've written here, David. Effectively, this is what we're already doing.
But you're also making it the appearance of the primary residence.
With a legal challenge.
Yeah, which is why we need to definitely.
Yeah.
You know, get these things more, more defined, I agree. But in the absence of better definition, I have been interpreting what we do have on the books in a way such that this is basically, what you've written here is basically how I have been administering permits like this. So, I mean, a lot of them don't, you know, like, a lot of, a lot of, most of the applications I've seen, this is, none of this is applicable because it's people saying, I've already got a barn, it's near my house, I just wanna confer, turn the upstairs of it, or like part of my basement into, uh, an ADU. So setbacks aren't really, meaning setbacks, whether they be primary or the principal or accessory, is most people, is not the issue that most people have. Um.
I think it's gonna become.
It probably will become an issue if people, it definitely will, people keep building ADUs. So, but just to, just to be clear, right now, we're basically already doing this, and so far there haven't been any issues that I'm aware of, of, you know, ADUs causing issues with directly abutting neighbors.
But what we aren't addressing here, it sounds like maybe, if I'm understanding correctly, the rule you've been informally using, which has been working, has another part attached to it, which is that it has to be pertinent to the primary resident.
Yeah.
Which sort of, in some ways, maybe indirectly solves the problem because you're, whatever situation you're creating, you're creating for yourself as well as the building of the ADU, right? You're not gonna put some loud Airbnb pertinent to your own house, and so you sort of indirectly. You're not gonna put some loud Airbnb a pertinent to your own house, and so you sort of indirectly solve the problem, right?
Does it make sense to?
I don't get that.
Well, if, if, it's one thing to, if you have an Airbnb that you think's gonna be loud, sorry Boris, if you have an Airbnb you think is gonna be loud, and there's a rule that says, well, the accessory dwelling unit has to be a pertinent to your house, which is.
No, a pertinent means subordinate, and that means anything.
I think you meant.
No, it isn't.
No, no.
Proximate.
No, it doesn't have to be proximate at all.
That is, no, I mean, uh, it, like, it's, it's hard to square, but yes, that is what I have been going off.
That was my understanding of what you were saying.
Proximate to, the problem is that there is no, there's no definition for how proximate that that has to be.
No, no proximity, there's no definition for proximity at all.
Yeah.
Anywhere on the property.
Well, there's no number for it, but the word a pertinent implies a certain proximity, so.
You could, you could have a five thousand uh square foot house, yeah, um, a mile off the road, yeah. But the guy wants to have a gatehouse down by the uh, yeah, road, basically, yeah, yeah.
I actually agree with you, David, I mean, what, it sounds like what Nick's been informally doing is, question is, should that be more formal, does that solve this setback issue? Have some sort of proximity?
Yeah, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, I kind of like.
That might solve my concerns over the setbacks, 'cause then you've gotta live with it too, it's the person who's building, right? So you're gonna.
You could make that somewhat generous, I mean, you could say, you know, within four hundred feet of a house or something like that. That you have to deal with there.
I was just gonna say, does it, does it make sense to address what you're saying is to make, say, oh, yeah, if you're gonna put a, a structure in, it has to be, the distance between your house and the structure has to be less than it is between the structure and the neighbor's property.
Can you repeat that? Can you take notes? What was that?
No, I just thought maybe, okay, you can put your, your dwelling, your ADU um anywhere you want, but with the criteria that it has to be, the distance between your primary ha- uh residence and the ADU has to be less than the distance to the, from the ADU to the sideline or the back line or whatever.
Yeah.
So you're gonna live with it more than your neighbor will, which that will control your behavior. I don't know, that's what came to my mind when you mentioned that.
I actually like that a lot.
If you, if, if you think that out.
Yeah, we have to think that out.
Options might develop from that.
Interesting idea.
Well, it'd be interesting to hear, particularly, you guys who are doing the buildings.
Yeah.
Just like you were saying that the thirty or.
Oh, yeah, the ones that I work are way far away from the neighbor's house, but they were.
Like you said, if it were thirty or forty feet, it would've been disastrous. It'd be interesting if you guys thought about.
It wouldn't work though, if you wanted to put something way back and your neighbor's house was way back.
The neighbor's was, was way back from the property line.
But you could still get it over, but it would still be farther from your house to his, even though you weren't bothering his house at all. You know, especially with spaghetti lots.
Hmm, yeah. You could qualify it by saying, and I know we're starting to go, but maybe by David's point, something comes out of this, you could set a outside limit, so you don't run into ridiculous situations, really. Oh, it's three thousand feet from my house, but it's two thousand nine hundred ninety feet from their house, right? You could set a, you know, provided that if the distance is more than two hundred feet or so, I just literally made up a number, doesn't matter, right?
It's not the distance to the house, it's the distance to the boundary. And so you would, it never would be a problem that way, um, you know, because it's either, uh, you know, if you're closer than seventy-five feet to the boundary, um, then uh, and it's eighty feet to your house, then you have to move it so it's closer to your house, that's all. It's not from your house to their house, it's from your house to their boundary.
Yeah.
I just got, I understand what you're saying, it's such a, I don't actually, kind of a, it's a mind-bending, yeah.
No, it makes sense to me though, it, it basically means that, it basically means that it doesn't matter where your neighbor has their house. We're looking at, you're evaluating how, how far away will this ADU be from my house relative to the pro- to my own property line? Just take care of your own, your own yard and your own, uh, your own piece of land. And it just assumes that the worst-case scenario is that your neighbor's house is directly located on the property line, and therefore makes it so that the burden, any potential burden of the ADU still falls, even in that worst-case scenario, this burden of the ADU still falls more on the property owner than on the property owner's neighbor. In reality, it's probably going to be a point because most properties, most people's houses aren't built directly on their neighbors, on their, on their own property line.
So if you look at all the, if you look at a lot of the houses that are on the fifteen-acre lots, there aren't, they're not close to the next house, they're not ten-acre lots.
No, they're usually closer to the road than they are to the next house down the road, yeah.
So, for sure.
That's why, that's another argument for keeping the setbacks the same as for the. I actually, I rather, I rather like Boris's idea because if you combine it with the, with the hard minimum of the accessory setback, accessory structure setback, you end up with a backstop saying that still, nothing can be, you like, you know, nothing can still be built within twenty feet of the line, even if you are in a weird scenario where, you know, where, I, I mean, I can't, I'm.
Well, you'd have to have both houses close to the property.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Is that right?
Well, we're not even worrying about where the neighbor's house is, we're only worrying about the, we're worrying about three things. The, it's the pri- the, the, the primary structure of the, of a house, the location of a proposed ADU on that same lot, and the nearest lot line.
Yeah, so if I had a house, sorry, I'm trying to, if I had a house and I was near my neighbor's property, and I was near my neighbor's property line, I would have to be within, and this is a, right, just not getting there mentally, I would have to be within X feet for this to realistically kick in versus the accessory line, right?
Yeah, exactly. Most of the time, this would be more restrictive than.
Fifty feet or something, right, or in that area, because it has to be closer to my house than it is to the property.
Yeah, you have to, you, your house already would have to be in forty feet of the property line for this to even matter. But, it would, but retaining, but sort of retaining that would be a backstop. I think that you could do this what Boris suggested, just by simply adding what Boris suggested and retaining everything that David has already written. So in addition to what David has written, if we add what Boris, uh, the spirit of what Boris just suggested, which is that, you know.
It's very good, I tried to write it down, but I think I missed it.
Yeah, which we, we should revisit his language, then I think those two would not be.
The distance from the house.
It's sort of.
The distance to the border.
Primary, you have to be closer to the primary unit than the neighbor's boundary.
I would phrase it as the, the, I would phrase it as that the, the the accessory dwelling unit, the proposed accessory dwelling unit must be located closer to the uh, or no more than, no more than halfway between the primary structure, the principal structure, and the closest property line to the, to the proposed, the property line closest to the proposed accessory dwelling unit, it's a little more complicated.
I actually think it's somewhat simple, like it just takes a while to get there, but I think we could get to really simple language, let's. Well, yeah, if you think it's valid, then maybe we could flush it out for next time, yeah.
No, I like it.
You could draw what you were talking about with the spaghetti lot, like what you're thinking for next week, so I understand what.
But I like what this does because, yeah, I like this in conjunction with David's already written because David, yours lays out a, I think a really good framework for like ninety percent of cases. And then Boris's goes a little farther to say, just in case you were tempted to take that, this, this, this structure and you, and sort of twist it to place an ADU really far away from your house so that you just don't have it near your house and whatever problem it generates is more likely to be your neighbor's house. Boris's, your, might be your neighbor's problem. Boris's idea says, ah, but you can't do that. You know, you can operate within this framework all you want, but there is a, a, there is a limit, and that limit is determined not by some random number, but by your house's own relationship with some property line.
Right.
And I think that's a pretty elegant solution, because it's, it automatically scales to the size of the, of the lot in question, and it doesn't just say all accessory dwelling units need to be this number of feet away from all lot lines or all principal structures, um, which is a bit of a one-size-fits-all approach.
Yeah, it seems like a great, they also have to catch things that we're not thinking about.
Yeah, I like that.
And, and it retains this, which I think is otherwise.
Super good.
All we need.
I don't understand.
So what about, okay, we got number two down.
Yeah.
And I can't read your line.
So number two is a detached accessory dwelling unit may be allowed as a conditional use in an accessory structure that is in non-conformance with the district.
Yeah.
Non-conformant.
So that would mean it was violating the setback.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, or some other.
Under a um conditional use.
Or some other violation, let's say it's, let's say there's an, it was built and there's a known wetland buffer.
Yeah.
And, well, let's say it was built and then they found out that it's actually in a wetland buffer, but it was already built and permitted, that would make the definition of pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
Like you can't make someone rip down their house because they built it and then later on someone else found out that it was built in a wetland buffer. But you can't, you can, you could stop them from.
And he knew he was building.
Yes, he did.
So, this would basically say that if you're, if you, if you are in a situation like that, you, you have a barn, the barn is like right next to a stream, you wouldn't be able to build that barn today, but you wanna change it from a barn to an ADU, you do have to go before the DRB and get conditional use approval for that project, and it makes sense, yeah.
There'll be some.
Conditional use with same, okay, yeah, so I like both of those, David, I like what you said in addition to it, that made a lot of sense.
So you just need to think through Boris's, we crystallized that in like.
I'd like to add one, one suggestion, I don't, I think you can drop the word detached, 'cause I don't think it is necessary to, I just don't think it's necessary, I think you don't need to specify. I would, I would suggest that simply because I like to look at this from the perspective of an applicant, and I think because the state makes no di- uh differentiation between detached and detached ADUs.
Okay.
I think it's a, I think it would be a good idea for us to try to stick to retaining that lack, you know, that, that, that categorization.
Okay, you could drop it.
But.
You know, say, um, you know, an attached, an accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, that's, I.
You can do that, right, in a, in a detached accessory structure.
Yeah, sure, there you go, yeah, exactly, yeah.
We might actually finish this next meeting, David.
The next thing we have is um the non-conforming small lots, there's confusion there.
Oh, we don't have that in here.
No, I don't have it there, I've got it working on.
Since they relate to ADUs or just in general?
Um, there, one, one spot there actually, on page uh thirty-eight B one, where it says, and I'm just adding something to clarify, it says there, development of a non-conforming lot under this section that is accessed by a twenty-foot easement or right-of-way shall be limited to one principal use or structure and accessory, and associated accessory structures and uses, including one accessory dwelling unit. Which it clarifies that in a non-conforming lot, you can actually increase the non-conformance.
Well, that, isn't that mostly due to the fact that the state says you have to allow? An accessory dwelling?
I don't, I don't know, I think it's not clear.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
This just clarifies, it says, yes, you can.
So you know on Waldorf Plain? Where across the road from where it used to be, where, where Mary and um.
Yeah, Mary and George.
George used to live.
Yeah.
The people that live in that house, not built an accessory dwelling unit right next door, their parents lived there.
Yeah.
They, they're there part-time now. But they didn't have to do any improvements to the road, they didn't have to do anything.
Yeah, that was out of oversight there. It was a real idea, by the zoning industry, and we're not picking up on that. No, it was beforehand.
Well, we actually had a site plan review, everybody, the whole neighborhood came.
Yeah, and it's.
Yeah, it is. Well, probably fifteen feet from there. But they didn't.
It wasn't me.
No, it wasn't. It was way out of you.
It sounds like maybe, just 'cause it's seven thirty, we can tell.
So look over Boris's.
I'll go, yeah, it is, I guess. Um, well, does anyone wanna make a motion to Jared? David, second, me, all in favor? Bye Sandy.
Bye Sandy.
Bye Sandy.
Bye Sandy.
Thank you, everyone.